You can go real quick and do a roll call vote. Or vote, roll call, just do a roll call, no votes. Uh, Councilor Hoffman?
Present.
Councilor Hutchison?
Here.
Councilor Youngman?
Here.
Councilor Merritt?
Present.
Uh, Councilor Papke will be gone, and I think as of today, he was caddying for his daughter in a golf tournament. Councilor Law?
Present.
And myself, please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just as for all. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have one addition tonight. It is a letter, a proposed letter for the governor and a brief statement preceding that. That would be under council business, the third item, under council business.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read it, and there are no questions or concerns. I'll take entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Steve Hoffman. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
This is Councilor Hutchison. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, we'll go to a roll call vote. Uh, Councilor Hoffman?
Aye.
Councilor Hutchison?
Aye.
Councilor Youngman?
Aye.
Councilor Merritt?
Aye.
Papke's out. Councilor Law?
Aye.
And I vote I myself, passes unanimously. All right, um, down to council business. Reading of the proclamation, April is Fair Housing Month. Yes, sir. Fair Housing Month proclamation. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted in on April 11th, 1968, enshrined into federal law, the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas City of Primal is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse inclusive communities. And whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists, and many communities remain segregated. And whereas acts of housing, discrimination, and barriers to equal housing opportunities are repugnant to the common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore being proclaimed that the City of Primal does hereby declare the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month. In the city of Primal, as an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunity for all residents and prospective residents of Primal. Move on to unless there was any comments on that, but we'll move on to item number four, intent to award purchased golf carts. Zach Lampert.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Zach Lampert, Metal Lakes Golf Course Manager for the record. And before you in your staff report, you should have a well, in your packet, you should have a staff report about the intent toward the golf cart fleet purchase. And what we're coming to you with tonight is a proposal to replace our current golf cart fleet. So it was in our capital improvement plan to replace, replace the fleet in the next biennium. And uh, the reason we're coming to you a little bit earlier than that is due to the kind of manufacturing delay that we're seeing right now with a lot of things COVID related and whatnot. So um, typically, we, if we place an order for golf carts in July, we'd be able to see them in August or um, maybe September, a couple of months, but right now they're about five months out. So we're trying to look ahead. Our current fleet is going to be six years old um, as of July. And to date, we've only replaced batteries in a few of the carts. So we've been happy with how long the batteries have lasted. Typically, they're only about four or five years. Um, so the fact that we're going to get close to six years out of them has been good. They're quite expensive to replace. So you look at a cart that's valued, trade in value right now, they're showing us is about $1,700. If you, you know, put $800 worth of batteries in, they're not going to give you $800 more on the trade in value. So it sort of becomes a, a point in time where you gotta weigh everything out. So we went out and requested some quotes on new golf carts. And we've heard back from all three companies in some regards. Yamaha has not given us an official quote there. Production seems to be really delayed, and I think that's partially why we haven't gotten a quote back from them. As you saw in the packet, we're looking, we explored the lithium batteries. So currently, we have lead acid batteries in the golf carts. Stuff's trending towards lead acid, away from lead acid and into the lithium. They last longer, they're less maintenance. They have a number of benefits. They are a little bit more expensive. So um, what we did was we requested uh, numbers from Easy Go and Club Car. As far as the lithium batteries are concerned, Yamaha is not producing a lithium powered cart yet. We received back quotes for both, which included trade in value on our current fleet of 54. We're looking to replace with 60 new carts. As you know, golf's been busy. We're up about 20% uh, golf cart usage is way up. Because we've had a lot more single riders during the COVID pandemic, people not comfortable sharing carts. Early on, we were forcing them to ride solo. Now it's not necessarily forced, but still a number of people are preferring to use that method. So the carts in the last year and a half have gotten a lot more use on them. Play was up, plus the fact that we had all the solo riders. So all those things mentioned. We received back quotes from Easy Go and Club Car. Easy Go was the lowest on the total cost. So their golf cart was a little bit more from a purchase standpoint, but they gave us a little more on the trade in. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, if we move forward with this, uh, the first payment would not be made if or it would be up to Liz, essentially, that's how we would proceed with whether we go for a loan or I, or Easy Go offers a lease to own option, which last I spoke with Liz, she was feeling like that was our probably best, best way to go. Basically, just loaning the money from Easy Go rather than from a bank. The first payment would be due in October, roughly a month after we would receive the golf carts. But that liability would be accounted for in the current budget, which would require a budget adjustment since we're, we would be signing the agreement now. So that creates the liability now. I believe that's what Liz has told me, but she can answer questions on that if you have any.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So anyways, uh, are there any questions? For me? Steve?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Zach. First of all, you're intending on ordering six additional carts, if I understand that correctly.
Correct.
Yeah. The additional revenue, does revenue, additional revenue offset the additional expense in that?
It does. It'll take a little bit for that to be recognized. I mean, eventually, it will catch up. The additional revenue will offset the expense. Right now, we only have space. We, we actually remodeled the cart barn a little bit to allow for a few more carts, and that's the most we can get in there. We have a number of large tournaments. You were a part of one here just a few days ago where we have to bring in outside golf carts. And that's a pretty large expense when we do that. So we can make up that revenue real quickly. It, it, it doesn't make sense for us to keep like 20 per se and then get our fleet up to 74 or 75 carts. But we feel like 60 is the right number based on all the numbers I've run. That it maximizes our efficiency. We don't really need a lot more to service even our busiest of days on a public day. Because once the carts go out in the morning, they come back in, you wash them, you can put them back out a second time. It's just, you have to kind of fit, fit it in. So it takes four hours to play. So you know, you gotta wait at least four hours till you get them back. And just a few extra carts gets you over that bubble of, of being out. So occasionally, we'll run out. We gotta wait till they come in. People have to wait around. Um, so the six gets us over that hump.
Another question has to do with the additional expense. It, it appears that just the maintenance itself is the ease of maintenance without having to add water, et cetera, to the batteries and recharge. Will the batteries hold longer so you can get two runs per day out of a, out of a cart with lithium without having to recharge it?
Yeah, they, um, they say they can go up to 54 holes a day, um, which rarely would we ever use them more than 36 holes. But um, they, they do get more, more life on the daily use. They uh, charge quicker also, which can be helpful in busy times. So that the extra expense, you know, they are, they are more expensive upfront, but as I, I ran a lot of numbers to the point where I think Liz was tired of me sending her spreadsheets. So um, if we keep these, what, what it allows us to do is keep them longer without having a payment. Which is when we would then catch up on the extra cost. So um, like right now, these carts we have now, we either gotta get rid of them or we gotta spend $60,000 on batteries. We feel like we can get eight years out of the lithium carts before any batteries. They, they're telling me 10. I'm just being conservative, saying eight. Most golf courses are on a four or five year lease program with their cart. So um, the industry standard, I would say, is most places are flipping them on a regular basis, just on a straight lease. Um, the cities always chose to purchase, and we've done that because we feel like it's financially the best decision. We keep them a little longer. We maintain them well. And uh, you know, you make up for it those last few years when you're not making a payment. So all those things considered. So I, I looked at an analysis of five years, 10 years. And in, in five years, if we were to repurchase a fleet like we have now, the net profit in that five years would be a little bit higher than what we're choosing to go with. If, if we go with the Easy Go lithium battery carts. But if you take that out to the next few years after that, um, when we won't have to be replacing batteries, we can run them a few more years without any cost. Or if we wanted to trade them in, the trade in value on these is much higher than our current fleet. At least that's what they're projecting. So it, it gives us more flexibility down the road. So we don't know what things are going to look like in another six years. If we needed to keep them 10 years, I think we'd be able to do that with these. So that, that's beneficial to us. Um, you know, the golf carts take, they just, you know, they get wear and tear after after five or six years, they are, you know, they show their age like anything else and have, that's, you know, typically, you can't just run them forever. Even if you change the batteries all the time, because everything else needs to be fixed too. So.
Well, that was my last question. You talked about running these for eight years. Will the cart itself, regardless of the battery, will the car hold up for that addition, those additional couple of years? Without looking so shabby that we're embarrassed to have them out on the course?
Yeah, that's, um, you know, so our last fleet before this one, if you remember those, those were easy goes, and they, we kept those eight years, and they were definitely showing their age at the end of it. What the part about this that I like is what I'm being told and shown on trade in value is the trade in value on these is roughly $4,500 a cart after five years. Where our current fleet is like $1,700 after six years. So, you know, pretty big difference there. So um, we're going to have a decision to make in five years if we go this route of do we want to run them three more years? And that'll somewhat base, be based on how, how much use they have. But um, if we do choose to trade them in, at that point, we're gonna be really getting a, a lot back for them. So we won't have to put out that much on the next fleet. So it does, it gives us some flexibility to where we can make that decision hopefully in five years of if, if it's uh, makes sense to flip them, do it. Or if not, keep them a couple more years if they're still in good shape. Typically, we take pretty good care of them. So I, I am confident we could run them eight years and not have any trouble. And how you start getting beyond that, yeah, they're probably gonna everything, you know, like the brakes and the shocks and everything else that you deal with, just like on a car is starts to go on a golf cart. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? For Zach?
Yeah, we have one question.
Okay.
Zach, this is Councilor Hutchison. So did you say if you lease to own that that's four years leasing and then they become ours?
Uh, it would be a five year.
Okay.
We would make five years of payments and then own them out, out, out right after that. They gave us, Easy Go in particular, gave us several options. So they gave us a straight cash purchase price. They gave us a lease to own. They gave us a pay us off, pay us for our carts and then do a lease for the full amount. So you can do a lease on the net amount. You know, there's a million different options. Liz, help me look through that. And I ran some numbers on the long term cost of leasing versus purchasing versus the lease to own option or getting another loan from a bank. And uh, the, the lease sometimes looks good, but if you do keep them a little bit longer, you end up making a lot better profit margin. Just because you don't have that payment, the extra couple of years. So even if you only keep them a sixth year or a seventh year, you really make a lot of money those couple of years. So in the long run, purchasing still makes sense, whether it's um, just paying outright cash or um, doing like a lease to owner, going out for a loan. Where we make that decision, Liz makes that decision really, but we will try to look at just the health of the fund. She has a spreadsheet that um, you know, spans way out. It's kind of our long term plan. And we plug in different numbers and see how it affects the long term health of the fund. And so um, she's comfortable with this and the way it looks, way it fits in with um, some of our other capital plans and the revenues and expenses. So um, it, it appears to be the best option for us right now.
Okay, thank you.
There any other questions for Zach? Entertain a motion on staff's recommendation.
But Jason, I have one more just little thing to add here. So typically with a typically with something of this price, we would go out for a formal bid. But since um, these companies, Easy Go in particular, Pacific Golf and Turf is part of a state contract, a cooperative purchasing agreement that the city has utilized in the past. So we can choose to forego that formal bid process and just go with these quotes that we've been given and make a decision off of that. So that's why in the recommendation there, it has the uh, recommendation of the council approving the intent toward the golf cart fleet purchase. Utilizing a Washington State contract that we can essentially piggyback off of. So it's, it's a cooperative purchasing agreement that's already gone through the bid process. So.
Thank you, Zach. Okay, now I entertain a motion to on the recommendation from staff.
This is Councilor Merritt, and I will move to approve the intent toward the 2021 golf cart fleet purchase. Pacific Gold and Turf utilizing the cooperative purchasing agreement of Washington State Contract Number 05218.
I'll second that. This is Steve.
Councilor Hoffman, second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the intent toward the 2021 golf cart fleet purchase to Pacific Golf and Turf utilizing the cooperative purchasing agreement of Washington State Contract 05218 in the amount of 300, 327,000, $300. Is there any further comment or discussion? All right, I will go to a roll call vote. Councilor Hoffman?
Aye.
Councilor Hutchison?
Aye.
Councilor Youngman?
Aye.
Councilor Merritt?
Aye.
Councilor?
Aye.
And I vote, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Two call, cards out there, Zach.
Not till September at the earliest.
All right, we'll move on to item number five. So I'm gonna start this off with a basically a letter to our constituents and about the, where we're headed with the COVID regulations. So I wanted to speak to our community tonight as we enter the fourth COVID surge and the governor's decision to move Kirk County or Crook and other Oregon counties back to extreme, closing bars and restaurants and other businesses once again. This council has listened to our citizens, and we passed Resolution 1474 on January 26th, 2021. The resolution finds that business owners and persons complying with Oregon OSHA COVID-19 rules are taking reasonable precautions to minimize the spread and exposure of coronavirus and should not face legal sanctions, even if those actions are inconsistent with executive orders related to COVID-19. The resolution has gone through the legal process of circuit court review, and we have been patiently waiting for Judge Mike McLean to issue an opinion. If validated, Resolution 1474 may provide local business owners a layer of legal protection as they decide how to manage their businesses. The city has continued to push forward this resolution despite Kirk County moving to low risk for several, several weeks as we wanted to be prepared in the event COVID cases increased. Unfortunately, another COVID surge had, and state lockdown is upon us. Our city council and staff continues to work for you, our citizens. Please know the restrictions are imposed and enforced upon us from the state of Oregon and not the city or county. To this end, I have asked staff to draft a letter to the governor tonight for our consideration. I had Lisa send out, send that out to each of you tonight, and I would like to ask your opinions. So all of you should have been emailed. I know it was last minute, but you should have all been emailed a letter tonight. And Jared and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but we wouldn't have to decide this tonight unless everybody has read it and approves, but this would be a letter going to Governor Brown. Basically stating that we're, you know, we've done everything we can and that our businesses are struggling and we can't go through this again. So but I'm open to any discussion.
I, I'd just point out, Mayor BB, that this letter is uh, very similar and uh, was written off the first letter that was sent out previously by this council to the governor's office uh, earlier in the year. So a lot of the same messaging and wording is taken from that original letter and just updated to our current situation. So this is not uh, new language or anything radically different than the council has already acted upon.
I'm sorry, this is Patricia Youngman. Um, I did not see that letter. Is it possible to read that? Or would that take too long?
I'd be happy to read it. Do you want me to read it? There's, do you want to read it?
I, I can read it.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah.
So in this, uh, we, we have had some edits suggested, and I have that copy with the edits. So Dear Governor Brown, on behalf of our locally owned foundational businesses, the City of Primal Council is asking you to consider not shutting down our businesses once again. Instead, we ask you to consider the following. One, continue to allow our small businesses to operate using the OSHA COVID guidelines. And two, trust our small business owners and employees to manage the COVID safety measures with the same tenacity and hard work to earn them earn them the success they achieved pre-pandemic. Primal, established in 1882, is the oldest incorporated city in central Oregon and the only incorporated city within Kirk County. Private, Kirk County stand united on this mission and equally feel the desperation of local economic, of the local economic atmosphere. Primal has survived world wars, the Spanish flu, a depression, and several recessions. We have reinvented ourselves throughout adapt, adaptability, perseverance, resiliency, and hard work. Our independent spirit and work ethic have resulted in the largest, most successful companies in the world investing billions of dollars into our community, benefiting our citizens and all of Oregon. Through it all, our local small businesses have been the foundation that has supported our success. Today, in our 13th month of the COVID pandemic, many of our local businesses are just beginning to recover. And sadly, if forced to shut down again, they may never do so. Your past and ongoing support that has provided funding relief is appreciated. But unfortunately, the funding cannot overcome the impact of ongoing shutdowns for the survival of many of our local businesses. By allowing our local businesses to continue to operate following COVID mitigation guidelines set by the state for the safety of our citizens, we can avoid certain ruin for many local business owners. We place a high priority and value on the health and safety of our community and support our partners at the Kirk County Health Department, OHA, and CDC, encouraging our citizens to follow health and safety guidelines. The severity of COVID, of the COVID pandemic is very real and a tragic health crisis that has claimed the lives of too many of our friends, families, and citizens. We have worked hand in hand with the Kirk County Health Department and all of our local healthcare providers and first responders to keep our community safe. It is difficult to accept that our local businesses are again being asked to sacrifice, but the state has not found a way to increase hospital bed capacity. The current hospitalization level is much lower than the past when hospitals were not overwhelmed. It is even more difficult to accept when federal funds continue to be delivered to the state to combat COVID. Please consider using that money to create solutions and lessening the financial burden of our already suffering citizens. The unintended health consequences of locking down our small businesses are all too real. Just like the COVID reality, we are concerned the lockdown cure can be as harmful to some as a pandemic. Equity is the key to both increasing the opportunity for local business survival and a demonstrated trust that our government believes in our citizens. Business owners and employees' ability to do, to do all we can to operate safely. We believe that another shutdown will lead our community to lose the ability to recover. Those businesses are foundational to our town. This is not an option we can afford. We are truly at a crossroads in Primal. Many of our citizens are confused, frustrated, angry, and just plain scared. They have been asked too many times to just hang in there, and we cannot afford to endure another another lockdown as the price is just, is too high. Our leadership is critical at this crucial point in time. We have listened to our constituents and we stand by, stand side by side with them. We are respectfully asking for you to continue to allow us to manage our city affairs responsibly and appropriately, and that you do not shut us down respectfully. Rodney James BB, City of Pringle Mayor, on behalf of the city council.
Thank you, that was lovely.
So this, this letter, it's open for comment now, suggestions, any conversation?
This is Counsel Youngman. That was very well done. I, I really think that's well said, well written, and precisely what we need to send to the governor. Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mayor BB, I, I'm glad you wrote that. That's the leadership and courage we need. I've been, I've been watching these health metrics, well, like the rest of us, all of us have for, for the better part of a year. And we're all aware of conflicting information that we are seeing that's now coming out from CDC and WHO. I got families that live in a state that never closed at all, and so watching their graphs continue to decline versus ours, which seems to do this roller coaster ride. I feel like, I feel like it's time to follow the science, which we've been being preached to for months. So I think, separate from supporting our businesses, which, which obviously has been my number one thing this whole time, is is that that maybe some of these things didn't work like we expected. And I've been following some of the comments by our commissioner, the commissioner over in Yam Hill and, and see they're fighting the same fight and coming up with the same information. And so I think it, it, I think as, as mayor and the letter that you wrote representing the council, if they were to approve, is absolutely the kind of message that we need to send to our state officials and our support for our community and our small businesses. So I appreciate your hard work on that.
I, I can't take claim for the, the letter.
That's.
The letter is a collective. I wish I had written all that, but I didn't, but I appreciate that. And I, I guess I would, if you have praise for the letter that you, that praise goes to staff that helped draft this letter.
You told us if we didn't write a good letter, you're gonna beat us up, so we wrote a good letter. Mayor, I'd like to add one thing, if I may.
Yes, sir.
FYI for the council and staff participating tonight, I did have a conversation with Judge Seth Crawford. He shared with me a similar letter that they worked on together with the city in the beginning for the first letter we wrote out. They have liked this letter, updated that. That's going before a county work session tomorrow morning. With every expectation, they will be sending a similar letter from the county court to the governor's office. So I just wanted to advise the council that the county, the county's letter and the letter that Mayor BB just read to you is, is a very similar message. And again, we, we have the, the good fortune to be hand in hand with our partners at the county on this subject as well.
So is there any other comment? Cause we haven't heard from a few of the council members, and I just, I want to be, make sure that everybody has a chance to, to comment on this letter.
Jason, this is Steve Offelman. I, I appreciate the thought, the opportunity to have contributed a little bit to that letter earlier, and I appreciate the tone of it, and it does need to go out. I would like it to go out as, absolutely as soon as possible. I don't want to sit on it and wait for, wait for a few days. I think it needs to go out. The sooner the better. So I would encourage us as the council to approve, approve the letter tonight and get it out in the mail tomorrow.
This is all, and I think the letter was well done. Good, good job.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Yes, I think that the letter was great. It was very thoughtful, had lots of details in it, and came right to the point. So I'm like Patricia, I did not see the letter. When it comes out late in the afternoon before council, that it makes it too difficult. I was on a Zoom meeting until 3:30. So it, it just makes it too difficult when it comes out too late in the day. Thank you.
I know, and I apologize for that. It was just with the news we received last minute from the governor's office, it's hard to, to get these things out before the council meeting in a timely manner. So I'm glad you get, everybody took the time to listen to it and that I could read it, and I have a consensus. Do we need to actually vote to send this out?
Yes.
Right, do we have a motion to approve this letter as presented to us to send to the governor's office?
This is Patricia Youngman. I will make that motion to, to send this out.
This is Steve Offelman. I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this letter as written and send to the governor's office. I, I'm gonna open this up. Is there any more comment? I doubt there is, because we've all talked on it. Right, we'll move to a roll call vote. Counselor Offelman?
Aye.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Counselor Youngman?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Law?
Aye.
The mayor votes, passes unanimously. Thank you all for that. I think it's a good thing that we show our support for our community. All right, we will move on to staff reports and requests. City manager's report, Steve Forrester.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out tonight with just a quick reminder that to our leadership and our council or electeds that the city will continue to do our diversity, equality, and inclusion training. Our next one will be held May 19. If you have any questions, please contact me or Lisa. From the police department, Janet, you tried to preempt me earlier in the, in the event tonight. So a quick update on where we're at with the new facility. We continue to progress with moving into the new facility. We have a three-phase approach. Phase one, which is completed, was the moving of the dispatch, which happened last week. So 911 dispatch and communications are now at the new facility and fully operational. So nice work to Rebecca and her team, and of course, with James's guidance as our, our project manager. Phase two will be evidence, and that's very complicated. We have to go through a chain of custody process. We have to, Dale has to work with the DA's office and our district attorney to make sure that all items are met in that exchange from one location to another, and that is scheduled to start Monday, May 3. We expect that will take a week, maybe a little bit longer to get all that done. And then the final phase, phase three, would be the moving of patrol and administration, and that will happen the week of the 16th. So that's the update from PD, and I see we have Chief Dale Cummins on the phone tonight. Dale, would you like to add anything to that comment?
No, sir. I think that really covers it unless there's any questions.
Does the council have any questions of Chief Dale? Thank you. I'll move on. From Meadow Lakes, the irrigation project is completed. They're doing some final wrap-up, some remediation work, and they'll have to demob, demobilize their equipment. You can see it being staged there as of this afternoon. So Zach fully expects by the end of the month, April 30, that everything will be concluded and the equipment and personnel will be moved off-site. Big news for Zach ties in with his request for golf play. We continue to, in essence, set monthly records out at Meadow Lakes. Golf play continues to be very strong, and I asked Zach about that today. He said we had a June month and April. So April over April last year versus this year, he's up 20% over last April. So that's a very, very strong increase, and we're doing real well out there. Also, with respect, Ron's Comfort Food, our restaurant, Lacy, Ron is working with Zach and others on providing an outside dining solution during this extreme regulatory world that we're living in. From Human Resources Director Darla Roden, reports that we've hired a new dispatcher to start this Friday. The real good news in this is this, this is a lateral move with a, with a person who has previous experience. So our training time will be cut very short, and hopefully this new dispatcher will be able to start providing value right away. And so we're very excited to bring in a lateral hire to those very critical positions. And we still have a couple of positions open in dispatch, and we're working to get those filled as fast as practical. From Public Works, the big news that Eric and I know Josh and Casey and planning are working with is we just continue in this city to experience a very high interest in development, and that is development both in residential activity, industrial activity, and commercial activity. We just have a lot going on. A lot of questions need to be answered. A lot of analysis has to be completed for some of these decision makers. Very good news for the city in terms of continuing to see investment in our, our little town here. On the finance side, Liz and her team, Lori and Liz and then the team are reporting that the biannual budget buildup is, is on track and developing. We always have a few little hiccups and a few little reasons to be nervous just because of timing issues, but everything's coming together. It's looking really good. The other big news, I think I've talked to you about before, is our preliminary audit results from our internal auditors has come back very, very strong, very positive. No items of significance. So I think that's again, a, a real testimony to your staff and in particular Liz and Lori's team on the way we conduct our accounting practices here at the city. From the Pringle Railroad, Matt has reported in the past, recent past, that we've had a lot of our storage cars, which can be a very significant part of our revenue stream at the, at the railroad. Those, a lot of those have moved out. We went from about 450 cars in storage at anywhere from three to six dollars a day, and as you can imagine, that adds up over a month's time, and, and a lot of those cars have been there, you know, many months. And we got down to about 40. And so, good news is, the economy's strong, so those cars are needed out on the, out on the rail, but it kind of hurts our little business in terms of that storage revenue. What's interesting is, is Matt has developed a very, very strong business model for storage utilizing some of our underutilized track space, and we are bringing in 107-car unit train this weekend, this Saturday night. So that's really gonna prop up our, our storage car revenue. The railroad's a little bit off this time of year. It's not expected, not unexpected, rather, as we go into the summer, we expect some of our industrial customers to start picking up steam a little bit with some additional rate car, rail freight traffic. The relationship with Marathon, who's 170 cars, really helps out the railroad, not in, only in terms of revenue as it relates to car storage, but also with that will come some railroad work on those cars, car repair and stuff, and free trip inspections, which yields even more opportunity for Matt to increase the revenue stream. So with that, I'll, I'll stop on the railroad, and I know that we have Matt here. Sometimes he's gotta work, but he is with us. Matt, do you have anything else to add from the City of Pringle Railroad?
No, you covered it. You know, when the storage cars go down, that's not a bad thing for the economy, just like you said, but it's, it's just all those little pieces that we're starting to fill in the gaps and be diversified. So, you know, the, the storage goes down, but we're picking up, you know, like you said, other, other things with our industrials. So the pandemic put a lot of storage cars in on us, and you get a little used to that revenue and, and, but you can't count on it. So I think, I think there's some opportunity coming up with, with fuel-related cars, with some of the policies that are coming down the pike with the green energy. I think, I think there's gonna be some real opportunity for us, and we have our, we have our foot in the door for, for some of those, so that, some of those energy cars in the future. So I, I think this will, this is, this one unit train of a, of a couple that we're working on. So we're hoping to get those in here and, and then, in storage.
Thank you, Matt. Real quick, before I conclude with my last item, Eric, did you have anything that you wanted to add from Public Works before I move on to my last item?
I think you covered everything well. We're just real busy, busy with new development.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Liz, Lori, anything to add? I guess not. Okay. Finally, we got some pretty big news, folks, with, with one of our key partners, which is our, our friends up at Facebook. They have hired a new site manager, a gentleman by the name of Brian Williams. I believe Eric and Mayor, were you with us for that meeting? Maybe it was Mr. Offelman, but anyway, we had the opportunity to meet Brian Williams, our new Facebook Pringle Site Manager, and a new site coordinator, Christina Kellogg, who'll be working with Candace Pringle, and we've known Candace for a couple of years. She's worked closely with us now, so we know her pretty well. But Brian Williams, the new Facebook Pringle Site Manager and new Site Coordinator in, in partnership with Candace. Her name, the new one is Christina, Christina Kellogg. So we're very pleased to welcome them into our community as partners up, up on Facebook, on the hill with Facebook. And while we were meeting them virtually, we, Eric and I, and I'm gonna have to say Eric really came after him and said, hey, you guys need to, need to take a tour of Prineville with us, let us show you around. And by golly, they, they took us up on that. So we all know William Marks, the Government Affairs, and William will be here tomorrow along with Christina, Candace, and Brian. And we're gonna give him a, a tour in the afternoon, and we hope to have the council meet our new partners in person as soon as we can. So at this time, I'd just like to have the council think about these folks and welcome Brian and Christina to our community. So we're really excited to have them. That does conclude my report. Are there any questions? Thank you, everybody.
I just want to apologize that I was on mute and couldn't get myself off, and your report was just fine. I had nothing.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to project priorities, American Rescue Plan, Steve Forrester and Eric Clonk.
I'll kick off. I'll start out, Eric, and turn it over to you. Eric's got a PowerPoint I think he's ready to, to bring up, but before you get started on his PowerPoint. So I just want to let the council know that, that we, we've really done our best to try to stay ahead of, of opportunities that, that as, as relates to the American Rescue Plan, ARP, we've, we've had some success there, but more importantly, we've really tried to leverage a strategy that's been very good to the city in that we try to have some skin in the game, some work done ahead of requesting funding for special projects. And the, you know, one of the things that come to mind is the roundabout. We have the foresight to, to put some money in a pot before we ever ask ODOT to partner with us. We've done the same thing, got some help from Mike McLean, Representative McLean at the time, to get some money ahead to do the Third Street Project. But we've just had good success in getting funding partners when we are able to get started and try to get ahead, and we've worked real hard for that. Secondarily, we've also worked real hard on our relationships with our, our local leadership, whether it's at the county, whether it's the state with Representative Iverson, state agencies. We keep them informed. We work real close with Steve Offelman's help with League of Oregon Cities. We even have the opportunity to converse with Association of Oregon Counties with our, with our partners over at County Court. So we're just out there, and it's paying off, and we also work real hard, and Eric does a great job in working with our federal legislation. So Senator Merkley's office, Senator Wyden's office, and of course Congressman Benz, and we're very close with his chief of staff here locally with Nick Strater, who used to work for Greg Walden. I think Steve Offelman's known Nick since he got out of high school or before. We're all, we're all aware of one another, and we work real hard to leverage those opportunities. So Eric and I have been communicating. We're looking at the other options with Vicky Iverson through some state funding that Eric will go through, some additional funding that the feds are passing through the state, and then some big federal spending, stimulus spending that we're all hearing about on, on the news each night. And what the really cool thing is, from my perspective, is we're in alignment with the county on, on one real important infrastructure. we're in alignment with the county on one real important infrastructure project that Eric will talk about. But we're just singing the same tune and we've got work ahead of us. That's really exciting, the opportunity for us to get some additional funding that could be very, very instrumental in improving infrastructure and shoring up some of our funding in other places here at the city. So with that, I'm going to shut up and let Eric walk us through where we're at and how we approached it. And again, just finally, these are all things that are in the master plan. These are all priorities that the council is very much aware of and has endorsed and and helped us work forward with. And we're just wrapping all that up and trying to find opportunities to leverage our good work here at the city into being able to get some funding to allow us to take these projects to the next level. Eric?
Thank you. Good evening, Eric Clon, City Engineer. So as Steve mentioned, we've been tracking these stimulus packages and projects that are coming through. Right, wrong or indifferent, if you agree with it or don't agree with it, it's something that we need to stay in front of. And hopefully better our community with, you know, if some good can come out of all of this mess, that would be fantastic. So as Steve mentioned, we've been actively engaged with the development of these different stimulus packages. We've been meeting with our state representative, that would be Vicky Iverson. Had many meetings with our gubernatorial representative, that would be Annette Leba from the governor's office. And then we've really had a wonderful opportunity to speak with both of our congressional delegation and our senators as well. So we were able to meet with our new Congressman Benz. He came into Pringle a couple of weeks ago. We chatted with him about our needs and our frustrations. And then with our senators, we've been working with their staff quite closely. And as I see it, there looks to be three different funding sources potentially coming out of this stimulus package. Next slide. So I look at as three different pots of money maybe potentially coming down. So that would be city money, state money and federal money. And we'll walk you through our best guess is how this is going to work. So the American Rescue Plan was passed in March 12th of 2021, 1.9 trillion dollars. Holy smokes. Six and a half billion dollars was directly allocated to city. And from that, we believe the city will receive approximately 2.2 million dollars. That first payment is expected to drop 50% of it in mid-June and we will need to expend these funds by the end of 2024. So that money obviously has ties to it. Eligible uses right now include responding to COVID-19 health emergencies, any costs that we've incurred through that, providing premium pay to essential workers, offsetting lost revenues that we might have seen for essential government services. So obviously our gas tax dollars are down significantly, which is the funding stream for our streets. They've also identified water and sewer and broadband infrastructure, but you'll note they left out transportation. And then they specifically say we can't reduce taxes. And these dollars cannot be deposited in pension funds, which makes a lot of sense. Next slide. So our plan for this first drop of money coming in is we would like to reimburse the general fund for any lost revenues and eligible projects associated with the COVID issue. And then with the construction of the police department building, there may be some eligible costs that we could use these dollars to refund the general fund. So working with James, working with Liz and Lori. It's kind of guess, but I'm thinking maybe $800,000 we could put back into the general fund, which will strengthen the city. And then you know, for the rest of it, I'd really like to consider some utility connection projects. We've got a lot of people in our city limits that are not connected to water, not connected to sewer. And so if that's what we decide to do as we move forward, we would just start to put a big project together that we're good at. So I think we would potentially have a way to turn that 1.4 million dollars into 7.4 million dollars. That would be taking those funds and matching them against community block grants. If we were able to take out a USDA loan of a million dollars, we could get a grant of a million dollars. And same thing with IFA loan and $750,000. Could return a grant of $750,000. Obviously, we're not asking for permission to move forward with this. We're just talking about potential opportunities that we might have. We'd really like to do some good with these dollars as they come through. So more to come on that as we learn more. We'll work with council to find the best way to spend those. The next pot of money is the state money. So through that American Rescue Plan, the state was delivered 2.6 billion dollars. The governor has plans on how she would like to see those dollars expended. These dollars are coming to the state. So the state has a say as how they can be expended. And you can see there's 10 different points that the state would like us to cover. But you know, importantly, they're talking about Oregon's infrastructure. You know, I think supporting resilient rural communities. So once again, I think we have the opportunity here to really tell a good story on how we could put those dollars to work, how we could help some of our citizens that might not have a water connection, a sewer connection and just do some good from this. Next slide. The state money. They, we were asked to provide our top three priorities. So the first priority is that Combs Flat Extension. We'd like to extend Combs Flat from Barnesby Elementary up to Peters Road. That would take a lot of stress off of Main Street. That's an 8.1 million dollar project. We're currently under design. We asked for 50% of that to be funded. So that'd be about $4 million. Extension of city services into underserved areas. So these are all the areas in town that do not have water or wastewater connections. That's an expensive project, 15 and a half million dollars. And we've asked for half of that to be funded potentially by the state dollars. And then our biomass project, that Pringle Renewable Energy Project, once again, a very expensive project that we're trying to move forward, 15 million dollars. We're asking for a quarter of that to be funded through the ARP. This project would be a boon for our community. You'd get the community out back into the forest working. I had the opportunity to drive from Pringle to Salem this weekend. That was the first time I'd been over there. And that's just a monstrosity of a issue that our state's dealing with. And I really think the City of Pringle could show that there is a way to helpfully manage our forest, put people back to work and create some renewable baseload power. So super excited about that. And those were the top three priorities that we provided to the state. And then last pot of money is the federal money. So this is the proposed stimulus package that they're currently working on. Biden's talking about two trillion dollar infrastructure package. We've had several conversations and letters with both the Senate and congressional staff regarding biomass. You know, we think this could be something that the feds get excited about. There's talk about biomass, renewable energy. And then on the other turn, we had a call from Merkley's office last week. He had a hearing last Thursday and he wanted information regarding not only those homes in our city limits that have no water and sewer connections, but also all of the areas around town that are not connected to water, sewer and everything we'd need to do to connect them. It's a big project, 37 and a half million dollars to connect everyone in the city in those adjacent areas. But we provided him with all of that information. He was able to share that in his hearing and then we'll have a Zoom meeting with Merkley on Friday to discuss that project. So we're hopeful that through all the horribleness of the last year and a half, that maybe some good can come out of that. Steve, is there anything you'd like to? Oh, last page is just these stimulus projects are really rapidly developing. We're trying to stay in front of them. And at the end of the day, any proposal will be made to council, be brought to council to make a decision. We're just trying to stay in front of it and get our name out, out there to where potentially we could be eligible for some funding. Any comments, Mr. City Manager?
Oh, Eric, wonderful as usual. I just think that you know, Eric, Eric and his team and all of us here to say, I think we're ahead of the game a little bit in that we've got some answers to the question. So when you know, somebody from Widener Merkley's office calls or Annette calls, we're able to respond really quickly and and get them something that they can go to work with. And Eric, we, Eric, we have a call with Senator Merkley this week. And I think we're going to have a little bit of a highlight about Pringle. An opportunity to highlight the work we're doing and make the ask. So you know, that doesn't happen because we're unprepared. It happens because we're prepared and we'll take full advantage of that opportunity later on in the week.
Yep, I would agree. At the end of the day, we wish we could just open up and get back to normal, get everybody back working. But this might be the opportunity to do some good with the dollars that are coming down.
Hey Eric, this is Janet. On one of your slides, you talked about innovative housing. Is that dollars for homelessness folks and for low income people? Or is there more description than just innovative housing?
You know, Janet, there's a little more than that. I could provide you with some information. That was just one of the governor's 10 key points that she would like people to consider as they apply for money.
Okay, thank you.
This is Steve Uffelman. I want to commend Steve and Eric on this presentation because it's I think it's really important for us to be very transparent with the skepticism of federal dollars or monies floating around. I think it's it's extremely important for us to be as transparent as possible so that the community knows exactly how the funds, how many, you know, what we are receiving in funds and how we are spending those funds in the, for the good of the of the community. And I think that's an extremely important focus for us to maintain as these, as we go through these numbers of dollars that are being thrown about from the federal and state levels towards communities.
Thank you. We'll try to stay in front of it for sure.
Yeah. And I just, just remind, thank you, Steve, as well. And I just, you know, Eric said it just a minute ago, but if we are successful and some of these funding opportunities do come full circle and become available, again, we will be coming back to council with the specific ask and the specific allocation of where those funding will go. But I think to Councilman Uffelman's point, you know, having an outline of where we think the best opportunity is, is really a good thing for us to share.
Thank you for that presentation, Eric. Thank you, Steve. All right, if there's no further discussion on that or any questions for Steve and Eric, we'll move on to committee reports. But do any of the councillors have a committee report they'd like to share?
This is Jen. I have one. It's with Ochico Forest Restoration Collaboration. And the group continues to work on the Riparian Forest Zones of Agreement. And we talked about today in our executive session to have a field trip to go out there out in the forest in May or early June because category four riparian is intermittent stream. So if we don't get out there early, we're not going to see any of them with the water in them. And so we're getting close to finalizing those, hopefully within about three or four months. And then the other information is the Forest Service gave us an update on Black Mountain on their environmental document and they're waiting, it was litigated. So they're waiting for Washington Office Approval with the settlement agreement. And then the Wild Horse environmental document, they're waiting on a decision and Washington Office Approval on that also. Walton Lake, outside of the litigation, the plaintiff amended their litigation and then the Forest Service had to address that. So there should be a briefing schedule soon regarding that. And Millcrick, the comment period has closed on that and the team has started to develop alternatives. And that's it for that report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other councillors that have a report? All right, hearing, I do have, this isn't a committee, but it's part of my duties as mayor. I was asked to attend a meeting with Governor Brown on Sunday and she wanted to go over the upcoming moves on the risk level, what it means for the state and for those counties. There was a big concern on beds, all things she's covered in her statement. 40% of the state was vaccinated or in the process of. And she stressed to us and other mayors that were on the call that she believes this would be a three to four week shutdown total. Her words. So I shared with her our concerns. I think our local area, our concerns for business owners and the shutdown and how that will affect them. And this is the same concern Mayor Anticoff from Redmond had. And it was a fairly short meeting. There's not a lot of chance to talk with her directly because there was 45 other mayors on the call, but but getting the chance to actually voice our concerns directly to her was nice. And she read all the comments and all the, answered as many questions as she could. So just wanted to let people know that I am doing everything I can to reach out to the governor and keep in touch with her and her staff. So right, is there any other committee reports? All right, there's none. We have no ordinances, but we'll move on to resolutions. Have resolution number 1481 authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Kirk County for chip seal. Scott Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Scott Smith, your street superintendent. So in your packet was a staff report in regards to approving an agreement with Creek County and their road department to perform chip sealing for the city on South Main Street. Like to point out, as Eric and I have communicated to council, we're always looking for cost effective pavement treatments. This chip seals another tool in our toolbox to extend the deterioration curve of our pavement asset in a very cost effective manner. I kind of hesitate to use this pavement treatment in our urban environments and our neighborhoods and and that, however, it is a good fit in our outlying rural areas such as South Maine. Partnering with the Creek County Road Department for their chip sealing services is not uncommon. Deschutes County has been providing the same services to the city of Bend, Redmond, Sisters for a number of years. I feel very comfortable and confident in the County Road Department. They have a very knowledgeable, experienced staff. They typically on an average year will chip seal 60 miles of county roads. So they're quite efficient and have worked out all those bugs. The county will provide all traffic control materials, equipment and labor to perform this treatment. And then once the county's done, we would contract with an oil contractor to apply to apply asphalt emulsion fog seal over that chip seal. And you know, kind of in comparison to do the same amount of street in our typical asphalt overlay would be approximately $175,000. Fiscal impact would be $38,833 out of the Transportation Department. And recommendation is city council approved resolution 1481, a resolution with Creek County to perform chip sealing for the city of Pringle in the amount of $38,833 and no sense. I'd take any questions.
The fog seal, what is what is different than what we would normally do?
So, you know, I think everybody's probably drove on a chip seal, a freshly chip sealed road, and you do have some loose gravel once that happens. So the fog seal would be a spray-applied treatment and it's a thin coat of asphalt emotion that would be sprayed over that that would lock in all those possible loose rock chips. And it'd also make it a little more comfortable for our biking folks that that use South Main with that being a tour route type deal. It would fill in a little bit of those voids to make that ride a little bit better.
Thank you.
Mr. Uffelman.
I have a question. Scott, how much, you know, on South Main, what are you talking about? What's how how long the section of South Main are you are you dealing with there?
We we're going to start on the south curb line of the Lynn Boulevard intersection and go to the end of our jurisdiction, which is just about the two mile marker, right, right at the first canal crossing out there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? I'm open to a motion to approve resolution number one, four, eight, one, authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Kirk County for chips here.
This is councillor Youngman, and I'll make a motion to approve resolution number fourteen eight, authorizing the city to enter in an intergovernmental agreement with Creek County for chip sealing.
This is councillor Hutchinson. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number one, four, eight, one. Is there any further conversation? Hearing none, I'll go to a roll call vote. Councillor Uffelman?
Aye.
Councillor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Councillor Youngman?
Aye.
Councillor Merritt?
Aye.
Councillor Law?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye and passes unanimously. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, move on to resolution number one, four, eight, two, amending Primeville Police Policies. Excuse me, amending Primeville Policies during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Jared Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Jared Reed, City Attorney for the Record. Resolution fourteen eighty two is in front of council tonight, and we had chatted about this a couple of weeks ago. This is to update some resolutions that were passed last year. In particular, we had two resolutions in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. One was in May, May twenty six, twenty twenty, another one was on July fourteenth, twenty twenty. And we were looking at these policies over the last six weeks in an effort to try to make them more consistent with the reality of what we were seeing within the state and within the community. And so really what we had done is we pared down these resolutions pretty significantly, or at least the actual orders within them and really concentrated on the internal resolutions in regards to the city itself. In particular, well, not in particular, in addition with the council chamber being being renovated currently. It's we continue to hold that city hall would be closed during that time period. Our staff has been able to work closely with the citizens during telephone, and we also have appointments that can be made by phone. And we can have a an appropriate conversation utilizing social distancing doing that way. So that's why we're maintaining those policies. Additionally, two weeks ago, we talked about eliminating the prohibition, not the prohibition, but our previous resolution had it so that all the council meetings would be done by Zoom or telephonic video. Excuse me, video, video transmission, and which is what we're doing tonight. And so the hope is that we will end up going back to in-person meetings. As stated earlier, we're still working to get the council chamber back back in order. But we're hopeful that we'll be able to go to in-person meetings again in June.
Is there any questions for Jared on on the resolution? All right, hearing none, I'm open to a motion to approve resolution number one, four, eight, two, amending Primeville Policies during COVID nineteen pandemic.
This is councillor Hutchinson. I'll move to approve resolution fourteen eighty two. And it's amending Primeville Policies during the COVID nineteen pandemic.
I'll second it. This is Gail.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number one, four, eight, two. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll move to a roll call vote. Councillor Uffelman?
Aye.
Councillor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Councillor Youngman?
Aye.
Councillor Merritt?
Aye.
Councillor Law?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, passes unanimously. Move on to resolution number one, four, eight, three, authorizing authorization to efficiently minimize or mitigate the effects of the COVID nineteen pandemic. City Attorney Jared Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this resolution is a resolution that has come to council. Every other council meeting, we review this resolution once every thirty days. As the council knows, the nation, state and county are all in declarations of emergencies. Their declarations last longer than ours. We made it a policy to review ours every thirty days. We've actually been reviewing this over the last couple of weeks and we were trending towards making suggestions that perhaps we didn't need to renew it. We've needed this resolution in the past, in particular for funding. The first CARES Act that came out was it was very beneficial for since that time, it it really hasn't had as much benefit in regards to the funding. However, with the news today from the state office of taking or increasing our risk level back to extreme and also making some suggestions about funding appropriations from the legislature, emergency appropriations. I believe it would be imprudent for the council to not renew it, at least for another thirty days. Because if there is appropriations that are available to cities that would need to be within that would need to have this resolution in place. We would need to have it in place and and tonight's the night to pass it for the additional month.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Are there any questions for Jared? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number one, four, eight, three.
This is councillor Law. I make a motion that we approve resolution number one, four, eight, three, a resolution providing the city of Primeville authorization to efficiently minimize or mitigate the effects of COVID nineteen pandemic.
This is Steve Alphman. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number one, four, eight, three. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go to a roll call vote. Councillor Uffelman?
Aye.
Councillor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Councillor Youngman?
Aye.
Councillor Merritt?
Aye.
Councillor Law?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, passes unanimously. Move on to resolution number one, four, eight, four. Authorizing the city to enter into a project development incentive funding agreement with Energy Trust.
Good evening, Eric Klon, city engineer. At the last council meeting, I presented a PowerPoint talking about our prep project. So that's Primeville Renewable Energy Project or the biomass project we're trying to get going. As I mentioned previously, this is something we're pretty passionate about. Lot of benefits, forest health, getting people back to work. We currently have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the Forest Service to move into design on this project. We are hoping to match that grant with an energy trust grant. And James, I don't know if you have that fourth slide of the PowerPoint from. Yeah, so here, here's the terms. Basically, we would be receiving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Energy Trust when we combine that with the Wood Innovations Grant from the Forest Service, then we're at our four hundred thousand dollar number that we need to complete the feasibility study. This would be a very in-depth feasibility study and potentially get us to a investment grade project where somebody could come in and make it happen. The terms of this money from Energy Trust would be they would like to see us start construction on the project by March of twenty twenty five. And if we were unable to do that, there's potential that we would have to pay back sixty seven percent of the money. So at the end of the day, it's pretty cheap money, no interest on it. If we had to pay it back, we'd only be paying back two thirds of it. And we just really think this would be good funds to move this project forward. I think this is a project that's near and dear to all of our hearts and be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Eric, this is Janet. At what point would you have to enter into a power purchase agreement?
Well, so Janet, we would enter into it as soon as we have a power purchase agreement, then we know we have a project that is financeable. And so we would need to enter into a power purchase agreement prior to construction. Once we have a power. I'm sorry.
And that's in twenty twenty five, right, Eric?
Well, we would, yeah, we would just need to start construction by March of twenty twenty five. So essentially, we would need to have a power purchase agreement by then.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, I think I'd just like to comment that there's obviously interest in this if we're pursuing. And I don't know who or what, but I I know this is something some of the other councillors have also worked on and been passionate about too. And it's definitely one I am that if if we could put one person back to work out in the woods doing some cleanup and and working out there, I would I would love to see it happen. But it sounds like this would be a good project to move forward of doing that. So.
Absolutely. As I mentioned, I drove to Salem for the first time. And it's just absolutely heartbreaking what you see there. And I'd have to say, if I was the mayor of Detroit, I would probably be pretty interested in some biomass power for my community, you know, just to get people out there and start treating the woods because it's just absolutely horrible what's happened.
I'd just like to add that I want council to understand this. This has been a big lift to tie in this Energy Trust grant together with the with the Forest Service grant, the Department of Agriculture. This has been a very difficult process because once again, Primeville is not doing things that other cities do the same way. We're innovative, we're outside the box, we're we're looking to solve real world problems as it relates to forest health, air quality, water quality. And even in the governor's suggested allocations of funding from the recovery plan, she mentions in that resiliency for small communities. The Primeville Energy Renewable Energy Prep Project can be a part of that. So there's a whole bunch of different attributes that are Eric and and his team and myself were bringing to bear to try to launch this project and getting Energy Trust to understand our strategy and the value of what we're trying to put together to Eric's point in an investment grade product has been a very, very long and difficult task. And you know, your city engineer has hung in there and and all of us have, but especially Eric. To finally get Energy Trust to come around and we're we're glad he did. And this does provide us the funding we think we need to get this project launched. Thanks, Eric.
This is Steve Alphman. I'd like to add to that a little bit. The community resiliency piece is is substantial. And then when you look at the attitude about breaching dams on the Snake River, there is continued continued demand for additional energy, but it's primarily renewable type, which requires batteries or some some baseload power support system. It's vital that we, especially with the fires limiting the availability of power to some regions, I think it's very vital that we have the ability to generate power for our community here in Primeville. And and I think it's going to become lifeblood down the road. So I think the sooner we can move forward on this, the more important it is for our community.
And Steve brings up a good point. We're currently looking at a twenty megawatt facility. And if you look at the the power consumption of Primeville, you know, the the mills that we still have. And then maybe all of Creek County, that's less than twenty megawatts. And so we really wouldn't have to put too many switches in the system to be able to have this facility provide power to all of Creek County in the event of a horrible ice storm or something like that, which we have saw last last winter, what happens when an ice storm hits a community. So potentially enough of these benefits will come together to where this will be a project that will move forward.
Is there any other questions or comments for Eric? Entertain a motion to approve resolution number one, four, eight, four.
This is councillor Youngman, and I'll make a motion to approve resolution one, four, eight, four.
Second.
Who is the second from?
Steve.
Steve, great.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number one, four, eight, four. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go to a roll call vote. Councillor Uffelman?
Aye.
Councillor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Councillor Youngman?
Aye.
Councillor Merritt?
Aye.
Councillor Law?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. All right, we'll move on to resolution number one, four, eight, five, authorizing an agreement between city of Primeville and Primeville Campus LLC. Matt Weiderhold.
Good evening, Matt Weiderhold, the city of Primeville Railway. This agreement tonight represents about a year and a half of talking with the the Primeville Campus people, the Primeville Campus folks. I think Steve Forrester and I have been up there numerous times and we told Mayor Beebe along with us. I know in the past we've had railroad, possible railroad update that would have referred to some of this as well as I've had a couple of councillors calling me on what's going on up there. So hopefully this will answer all those questions. So the old wood grain product, old wood grain mill site, and they have coined it the Primeville Campus, and they've requested rail service up there. We started this conversation at the end of eighteen. The problem with that facility is there's about thirty eight hundred lineal feet of track and it is absolutely, it's the worst track we have on our line. It's 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 no longer usable. So but they did request a service. The problem is is they didn't really have anything tangible when we started this conversation. So it's really hard for me to come to council and tell you we're going to spend a hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand dollars on on speculation. So this is where this agreement came into into play. Primeville Campus, they've agreed to put up about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to to bring the track back up and do into a class class two, which would be the class that would need to service just about any kind of commodity up there. They've already put seventy two thousand into the line that they are not refunded. It's not refundable. They they they're just, they have to pay for that seventy two already out of pocket last summer. This one hundred and fifty thousand, we we would have a refundable. So what I'm trying to do here is is where they don't really have a good rock solid customer base for rail, trying to give them a little skin in the game. So what we've offered is a payback period. So if they put up to a hundred and fifty thousand, we have a payback period of fifty percent of our line haul rate from the UPIR BNSF until the from the UPIR BNSF until the 150,000 is paid back. But we did put a, put a clause on that, so it's six years. So they have six years to pay us back with rail cars. And, and I know I didn't put the line haul rates in the, in the agreement in the resolution tonight, and that was purposely done, because I like to keep those kind of confidential. So if you want them, you can reach out to me. But what that does do, in six years, they would need to pull about ten cars a month, would pay this off in six years. And I don't think that's unreasonable for that. We're not, we're, we're trying to incentivize this, obviously. And the intention of this isn't to put $150,000 repairs on them and then give them a bunch of gotchas. I mean, we wanna, we wanna see them thrive, and we wanna see that industry develop jobs and so forth up there in rail traffic. There is some city responsibility we put in here, and this is a result of negotiating back and forth with Prineville Campus. It says that we should fund signalization requirements as needed, as, as well as some switch ties that are on the bottom, crossing panels and so forth, at $150,000. This is normal operational costs. If there was a lot of traffic going up and, up and down that hill, we wouldn't just cut them $150,000 check matching. This would be as these things are, are needed. And what it was, is Prineville Campus didn't want to put another 150,000. So they're gonna be into this thing, what, $222,000? And they don't wanna put that in there, and then six months, the city comes back and says, okay, well now you need another $50,000 crossing. So like I said, these are normal operational expenses. It's not gonna be an out-of-pocket cost right off the bat. This is a good thing if they get to do, get to do that much traffic up that hill, and we need to absorb this in our maintenance plan. That's, that's, that's not a bad thing. So with that said, you know, I, I think with council approval of this tonight, you know, we have, I looked at this morning, we have about fourteen industrial spurs that are kind of in the same condition. I look at them as, you know, place savers. I mean, they're not usable necessarily, but they're, they're place savers in case, just like this, somebody buys that facility. I think this is probably gonna be the direction we go moving forward. If somebody comes to me and needs track service, this is probably gonna be the new norm for us. You know, I wanna believe everybody, but when they come in and tell me that they're doing 20 cars a month, and we put up to $150,000, that doesn't make sense. And I wouldn't feel, feel right asking for that. So with that said, if you have any questions, I can answer them, and if not, I appreciate a motion.
Now, this is Counselor Hutchinson. So I can't remember, I know Main Street has had more traffic on it since you've quit using the rail and through there. And I can't remember if, where the tracks cross North Main Street or Mackay, where, whatever you call it there, if that has one of those downbars that stops the traffic or prevents accidents, or is it the red lights?
Crossing gates, so, so it's a wonderful question. So it crosses just down, probably a hundred feet south of Peters there, the Peters intersection, right at the, right at the edge of their facility. It does not have crossing gates. Scott Smith and I have had several conversations to bring those crossings back into service. And then we, we've actually got approval for that crossing in the next month or so, probably, will come back into service. We're not required to put, crossing, get arms on that crossing right now, because it's so old. I think it was 1939 is when they, they wrote for that crossing. We do have to implement some safety measures in the, in the form of stop and flag. You know, from an operation standpoint, if this does get going, and they, and they have regular cars out of there, you know, I'm not gonna run up there at eight o'clock in the morning and sit in an intersection for a half hour. I mean, that's not gonna happen. As the Combs Flat and Peters Extension starts to move forward, we will have to put crossing gates at that. And, you know, we're working with Eric and his group. I'm pretty certain that we'll get some grant funding for that. Oregon's really good at giving grants for those crossing gates and then turning them over. And that'll all have to interconnect with a traffic signal, if a traffic signal's there. Those crossing gates and everything will, will, will inter, interconnect at that point. But for the interim, no, there's, there's no, there's no arms, there won't be any arms. We'll, we'll have stop and flag measures and try to cross that in hours of the day that aren't so crowded.
So I would guess there would also be some publicity that happens that says that we're, that you're gonna start using, having rail go through there so that the public knows to kind of keep an eye on that, since it's.
Not required, but Scott's on that, all over that. The plan is to kind of do a slow start. You know, we've got Bus Barn, it's gonna affect, you know, any of their, any of your propane or hazmat trucks are gonna now have to stop there when they haven't had to for, since 2014 years. So the plan is to start bringing this crossings back up into service. You know, Facebook, newspaper, you know, Scott's came up with the idea of maybe putting the reader boards up. The first couple of weeks possibly, if we start going in there when, when rail traffic's going. We even thought about putting the reader boards up that we can activate. So as the train crews come up, we could actually activate the reader boards, kind of give some heads up. So, yeah, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna make it as, as known as possible. You know, with that said, you know, council should know, I mean, we will get some calls. I mean, people are used to not hearing us up there, and, and I fully anticipate that we will get some calls from, from noise or I don't think traffic backup's gonna be an issue, because we can get across there so fast. I mean, it's, we're only gonna go through there probably 30 or 40 seconds, and we'll be through there. But I could see some noise complaints with our whistles, because we will have to blow, blow our whistles through that intersection.
Thank you. I'm glad you guys are on top of all of that.
Yeah, I'd, I'd remind the council, too, and we, it's so easy to forget. But I, I, we have to remember that even during my tenure up there as the plant general manager, we had 600 people up there employed, and we had two shifts, sometimes three shifts. There's an extreme amount of car traffic that came out of that plant every single day. We had forty to fifty trucks a day, sometimes more, sometimes up to a hundred large semis moving in and out of that property. And if you go back into the 60s, there was 1,200 employees at that location with hundreds of trucks per day on the inbound and on the outbound combined, along with a significant amount of rail traffic. So although, everything that Counselor Hutchinson said is exactly right, and what Matt said about getting complaints, but I think it's important that we remember that in the past, that was extremely heavy traffic area, and always has been. The difference is, the type of traffic is more residential-based now than tied to that operation. So I think we have to remember that and take every step to Matt's point to make it quick and effective and efficient. But that's a high-traffic area, and we need to be prepared to deal with that.
Is there any further questions for Matt? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number one four eight five.
This is Counselor Hutchinson. I'll move to approve resolution one four eight five, author, authorizing agreement between the city of Prineville and Prineville Campus LLC.
Counselor Law, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number one four eight five. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go to a roll call vote. Counselor Offerman?
Aye.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Counselor Youngman?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Law?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, passes unanimously. Thank you, Matt. We'll move on to resolution number one four eight six. Annexing certain property into the city of Prineville, Josh Smith.
Evening, council. Got a relatively simple annexation for residential property on Bailey Road. The owner has petitioned the city to annex that property. It's about .38 acres, last one on that west side of Bailey Road to annex into the city. Services are on the west side of those lots, so they are capable of getting city services, that's why they annex. This is not a public hearing before council. We did have a public hearing before the planning commission. A notice was sent to neighboring properties, newspaper notice, posted notice as required by the state. No comments were received, and the planning commission provided a recommendation of annexation into the city as a general residential R2 zone, which is consistent with the surrounding area. What you have in front of you, and what you're seeing right now is Exhibit A. That's mostly for State Department of Revenue purposes, so they can identify the lot readily. So those, I have to send these off to the state for approval as well. And then on Exhibit B, that's simply a zoning map that shows a comparison from the city, which is R2, and the county, which is currently SRM1, which is a suburban residential zone. I like to do these maps for tracking purposes, so we can always look back and see what it was. And with that, I will take any questions that you might have.
I don't have any questions, but it seems like there's mod-shaped properties down in that area.
That, that's how the county used to subdivide. So you get into here, and you get into Willowdale, you get into that old mill town, and it gets a little chaotic.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to talk to Jerry Brummer about that.
Yep.
Offerman, I, I looked at the properties today and see that as the utilities are already available, it will not require us to accept a road that is in less-than-city standards, which I would, I would hope to have if, in fact, we were annexing both sides of the street. But that single lot does not, does not demand the road, any road improvements at this point.
No, the Bailey Road will remain a county road. This, this resolution will annex the right-of-way as we always do, because right-of-way is technically part of the street, or part of the lot. But annexation of right-of-way does not transfer jurisdiction. So it'll just bring that half of the road in, but it doesn't actually transfer jurisdiction, similar to what we did in Crestview subdivision when we annexed it. The roads remained in the county until we accepted them.
Is there any other questions for Josh? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number one four eight six.
This is Steve Offerman. I will move to approve resolution number one four eight six.
This is Counselor Hutchinson. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number one four eight six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll go to a roll call vote. Counselor Offerman?
Aye.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Counselor Youngman?
Aye.
Counselor Merritt?
Aye.
Counselor Law?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye, passes unanimously. Thank you, Josh. All right, that brings us down to the end of the meeting, unless any of the counselors have anything they'd like to say. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Counselor Hutchinson. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight.
This is Counselor Youngman, and I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Or adjourned?
Have a good evening.